Okay, so of course this morning we have Oliver Nelson, who will be speaking to the subject matter of coming out of Babylon. Without further ado, I just want to pass the mic to him as he leads us out in this, in this study this morning. Alanus.
Thank you, brother Alfred. Well, a good morning to all of you. A very early morning here in the central Midwest portion of the United States. Some of you know I live in Minneapolis. It's three o'clock in the morning here and it's about two degrees outside. So much different climate than where you all are. You all are living right now, but God has been faithful. He has sustained us and he has protected us. And he is is moving us forward in in his message, this message to the end of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ coming again. So it's such a blessing to to be with you once again on this this wonderful platform where the subject that is most near and dear to my heart, the subject of the most precious message of righteousness by faith. It's shared consistently and and with vigor and with enthusiasm. So we want to get right into the study this morning and I will attempt to share my screen with you. Let's see here. Let me know if you're not able to see the PowerPoint presentation on my screen. Also let me know if you have any issues hearing me this morning.
So we are we are seeing and we are here.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay. So before we begin, let's just bow our heads again for a word of prayer. Father, we just ask that you would send your Holy Spirit to just take control, Father, of this moment. We come to this place, Father, we come to this moment realizing that we are weak, we are ignorant, we are as little children needing to be taught, not by man, but by the person of your Holy Spirit. So Father, we just pray that you would send your Holy Spirit now to provide us with that unction that is needed to just to lead and to guide us into all truth and to get us give us a better understanding of the movings and the workings, not just of the enemy, but of 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 your Son and of the Spirit of God. In in these last days, we pray that the information, Father, that this that is shared might be more than just information, but may it be information, Father, that results in our edification and results into the saving of our souls through the person of your Son. And so just be with us now, we pray, Father, in Jesus's name. Amen. Okay, so the subject is this morning is is coming out of Babylon, God's fight for religious freedom. This is a we'll call the part two of a study that we began the last time that I was with you. Study on the subject of religious liberty. And I just want to tell you from the beginning that sort of the foundations of this study come from a couple of sources. One of the sources is a book that was written by Elder A.T. Jones, the book entitled Civil Government and Religion. And if you see here on the screen, I've I've provided you with a quote which comes from the foreword of that particular book. And it's it's interesting if you if you read this foreword and you see it up on the screen. Elder Jones talks about kind of the source material for this book. And he says, "This little work is the outgrowth of several lectures, delivered lectures, several lectures upon the relationship between religion and the civil power delivered in Minneapolis, Minne- Minnesota in October eighteen eighty-eight." Well, look at there. That is an important date to all of us, isn't it? Elder Jones mentioned that the lectures are that are found in this book were delivered during the eighteen eighty-eight General Conference Session. He goes on to say that this interest manifested in this subject and numerous requests for the publication of the main portions of the argument presented have led to the issuing of this pamphlet. It is not intended to be exhaustive in its discussion of any point upon which it treats, but only suggestive in all. The subject is always interesting and important, and as there is now persistent demand being made for religious legislation, especially in relation to Sunday keeping, this subject has become worthy of more careful study than it has ever received in this country since the adoption of the National Constitution. So these, the 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 presentations or lectures in this book were presented by Elder A.T. Jones on the subject of religious liberty during the eighteen eighty-eight conference. Another quote from A.T. Jones himself, which I found to be very fascinating. This was a quote that comes from a letter that Brother Jones wrote to a fellow brother named Brother Holmes in May, on May twelfth nineteen twenty-one, shortly before his death. And it's a letter that he wrote sort of reflecting upon the Minneapolis eighteen eighty-eight event and what took place there. But listen what he said to what he says here in this letter that he wrote to Brother Holmes. He wrote, "But as you know, Sister White stood out openly and strongly all the way for righteousness by faith. And after the conference was over, the preaching of righteousness by faith was followed up by her by her and Brother Wagner and me through the winter following and by her and me in Battle Creek. And it was given the greater force by the message of religious liberty that was endorsed in that General Conference." Isn't that interesting? The message of righteousness by faith, Elder Jones says, was given the greater force by the message of religious liberty that was endorsed in that General Conference Session. And obviously, the session that he is referring to is the eighteen eighty-eight General Conference Session. Now, my position this morning is is not that religious liberty in in any way, the message of religious liberty that that Jones preached and and wrote about and advocated during the eighteen eighty-eight General Conference Session. It's not my 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 position at all that this message somehow supplants the message of righteousness by faith or replaces it in any way. But my supposition is this. God knew that a knowledge and acceptance of the principles of religious liberty was what was needed for the most precious measures to be effectively carried throughout the world. God knew that the principles of religious liberty needed to be understood and and embraced and received by his people because of the religious also because of the religious liberty violations that were occurring during the late nineteenth century. So that's that's I provided you with these quotes to give you some insight into the sort of my motivations behind this study and and why I feel that it's so important that we understand these principles of religious liberties as we continue in these last days. Now, some of you were present from the previous presentation that was given on on this subject of of religious liberty. And I just want to spend a couple of minutes just sort of summarizing the 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 key points from that prior presentation. What we learned from the prior presentation, if you were present for it, was that God is the divine originator of freedom and liberty. God is the divine originator of freedom and of liberty. What we also learn is that the gospel represents and is in actuality a liberating power, a liberating power that provides freedom to the believer. Freedom to, number one, actually choose God and freedom and also freedom to be free from sin and all of its pernicious effects, sin's penalty, its power and its presence. Thirdly, we learn that Christ himself established a wall of separation between religious matters and state matters. Christ himself established a wall of separation between religious matters and state members. That that key text that we focused on in our last study was found in Matthew, chapter twenty-two, verses fifteen to twenty-two, where Christ himself said, "Render therefore to Caesar the things that are Caesar and to God the things that are God." So again, Christ establishing this this boundary line of this or this wall of separation between church and state. Christ establishing that there are certain duties, specific duties that we owe God and certain duties that we owe Caesar or the state or the government. And we talked about the specific duties that we owe God, that we owe to no one else, including the state. We owe God what? Our first love. Bible says, and I'm text is not on the screen, but it's the text that we all know, Mark, chapter twelve, verse twenty-nine. Bible says that we owe God our love. We are to love God with all of our hearts, soul, mind and strength. And we are obviously to love our neighbors as ourselves. We owe God our reverence and our obedience. Ecclesiastes, chapter thirteen, verses two, says that the whole duty of man is to fear God and to keep his commandments. We are obedient. We keep God's commandments as a love response to God, not as a salvation motivating response to God. But the Bible is also clear that that we owe God our worship. Revelation, chapter fourteen, verse seven, talks about how we are to worship him who made the the heavens and the seas and 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 everything that we see about us. So again, there are duties that we owe to God, as Jesus says, render unto Caesar that which is Caesar, render unto God the things that are God. There are duties that we owe God, and then there are duties that we owe Caesar or the government. We talked about how the duties that we owe Caesar or the government include the duty for better or for worse, to pay taxes. Okay. But more importantly, we owe the government the duty of our civility. Our civility. Romans, chapter thirteen, beginning in verses one, we're not these, again, we're just summarizing what we spoke about last time, so I won't focus on these texts, but Romans, chapter thirteen, verses one through about, I think, through the end of the chapter, talk about how we are to be subject to the higher powers, higher powers being the government. It talks about how those powers are ordained of God. And it talks about how those powers extend to our relationship between each other. And essentially, Paul is making the point that the government has the the right, the duty and the responsibility to enact laws that deal with humanity's relationship with each other, to, in a sense, to preserve order within our society and to make sure that our society is functioning in a safe and orderly way. So that's just a brief summary of 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 what we discussed last time. But I want to now transition to the particular element or piece of religious liberty that we are going to focus on this morning. Title of our message today again is is Coming Out of Babylon. And that, of course, begs the question, what is Babylon? What is Babylon and what does Babylon represent? And this actually is is a profoundly broad question, a profoundly broad question. And the answer to the question, this particular question is layered and and more profound and much more complex than most Christians, including myself, even though or realize. And to, you know, as 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 a good Seventh-day Adventist, you might, you know, the initial response to 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 this question, what is Babylon? What is what does it represent? The initial response might be, oh, well, that's the Catholic Church. Revelation, chapter sixteen, seventeen makes in another text, in Daniel and Revelation, make clear that that Babylon is the Catholic Church. That would be the simple answer. That would also be unfortunately, a very surface level answer to that question of of what is Babylon and what does Babylon represent? But the actual goal of our study today, friends, is is what we want to do today is we want to gain a a clear understanding of what Babylon is and specifically what Babylon represents within the context of religious liberty. Again, we want to gain a clear understanding of of to this morning of what Babylon is and what it specifically represents within the context of religious liberty. And to understand this, we first must be clear on who is at the head of Babylon. Who is at the head of Babylon? We know that Christ is at the head of the church. But who is at the head of Babylon? Isaiah, chapter four, verses seven, Isaiah, chapter fourteen, excuse me, verses four through seventeen, provides the answer to this question. And we're going to read all these verses. It might take a little bit of time, but we're going to read all these verses because I think that these verses are key and 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 important for us to truly understand what Babylon is and what it represents and who is at the head of Babylon. The gospel prophet Isaiah in Isaiah, chapter fourteen, verses four through seventeen, says, "That it shall come to pass in the day the Lord gives you rest from your sorrow and from your fear and the hard bondage in which you were made to serve, that you will take up this proverb against the king of Babylon and say, 'How the oppressed has ceased! The golden city cease! The Lord has broken the staff of the wicked, the scepter of the rulers; he who struck the people in wrath with a continual stroke; he who ruled the nations in anger is persecuted, and no one hinders.'" Again, the gospel prophet here talking about the king of Babylon issuing a prophetic proclamation against the king of Babylon. He goes on to say that the whole earth is at rest and quiet. They break forth into singing. Indeed, the cypress trees rejoice over you and the cedars of Lebanon sang, "Since you were cut down, no woodsman has come against us." Continuing verse nine, "Hail from beneath is excited about you to meet you at your coming. It stirs up the dead for you and the chief ones of the earth. It has raised their thrones. All the kings of the nations, they shall all speak and say to you, the king of Babylon, 'Have you also become as weak as we? Have you become like us? Your pomp is brought down to shoal, and the sound of your string instruments, the maggots is spread under you, and worms cover you.'" And then continuing on, the prophet says, "How you are fallen from heaven!" It's interesting that the gospel prophet Isaiah provides a a description of the king of Babylon. And then the gospel prophet, the gospel prophet specifies, specifies, and it's interesting, when I used to read this chapter, I sort of, I I kind of separated it. I didn't read the the chapter as a whole, not clearly understanding that the description that was given of the king of Babylon actually is that the the person that the Bible describes right here, O Lucifer, son of the morning. The description of the king of Babylon is provided first, and then the actual name of who that king is is provided next, beginning here in verse number twelve. Lucifer is the king of Babylon. O Lucifer, son of the morning. How you are cut down to the ground, you who weaken the nations. Look, these with the Bible provides the specific name of Lucifer in describing Lucifer, it describes Lucifer in the same way that the Bible describes the king of Babylon in the previous verses that we read, right? So, "O Lucifer, son of the morning, how you are cut down to the ground, you who weaken the nations, for you have said in your heart what? 'I will ascend into heaven. I will exalt my throne above the stars of God. I will also sit on the mount of the congregation on the farthest sides of the north. I will ascend above the heights of the clouds. I will be like the Most High. I will be like the Most High. Yet ye shall be brought down to shoal, to the lowest depths of the pit. Those who see you will gaze at you and consider you, saying, 'Is this the man who made the earth tremble, who shook the kingdoms, who made the world as a wilderness and destroyed its cities, and who did not open the house of his prisoners?'" Friends, if we want to understand what Babylon is and what the king of rep and what the king of Babylon represents in substance, we must study the kings of Babylon and what their actions symbolize and type. In other words, friends, just I I want to be clear here. Isaiah, chapter fourteen, makes clear that the true king of Babylon was not Nebuchadnezzar. It was not Belshazzar, Nebuchadnezzar's grandson. It was actually Satan. It was actually Satan. And the kings of Babylon, who are described in the book of Daniel, actually are representatives of Lucifer in type, specifically Nebuchadnezzar before his conversion, right? The actions that he took before his conversions. And and also the king of Belshazzar. They are simply types of the anti-type king of Babylon, who is Satan himself. And again, if we want to understand what Babylon is and what it represents, we must understand what the king of Babylon represents in substance. And that's Lucifer. And so and to understand this, we must study the kings of Babylon. We must study their stories, their their actions, and we must clearly understand what their actions symbolized. So let's do that. Let's do that now. And and we won't go to 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 all the particular passages in Daniel. What I'm going to do is we'll I'll provide you with the chapter, chapters that you're well familiar with, and we'll just do sort of a brief overview. Brief overview of of each of these chapters in Daniel that are listed there on the screen so that we have an understanding of of what these various kings, who are types of the true king of Babylon, what their actions represented or symbolized. Daniel, chapter one, deals with Daniel, right? And his Bible says he purposed in in his heart that he would not eat and drink the king's food. Why did Daniel purpose that within his heart? Well, it's because Daniel understood that the king's intoxicating drink and and food was 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 sustenance that was not good for him, right? It was sustenance that would benom his spiritual sensibilities. Now, the king of Babylon at that time, Nebuchadnezzar, insisted upon this diet for his subjects. But again, Daniel, knowing that keeping such a diet would result in his relationship with God being undermined, Bible says, what did he do? He rejected the king's food, even though he was a subject of the king of Babylon, even though he essentially was a slave of the king of Babylon. So here in type, in type, we see Babylon representing, representing in substance, doing damage to your mind and body by consuming food and drink that ultimately undermines one's relationship with God. That is a element or feature of Babylon, okay? You know, and we don't believe in righteousness by diet. We don't believe that if we abstain from pork or if we don't, if we don't eat lobster, that that means that we're righteous. We don't believe in that. And that's not what I'm trying to in any way suggest or teach here this morning. But what I am saying is that Babylon includes features that go to our diet. A diet that if we consume will result in decayed physical performance, decayed mental performance and an undermining of our relationship with God. That is a feature of Babylon. What is another feature of of Babylon? Daniel, chapter four, Nebuchadnezzar. This is his conversion story, as many of us know. Nebuchadnezzar before his conversion was what? Nebuchadnezzar was proud before his conversion, right? Nebuchadnezzar was haughty before his conversion. Nebuchadnezzar was arrogant before his conversion. Nebuchadnezzar was self-exalting before his conversion. See the parallels between Nebuchadnezzar and the true king of Babylon, who said that I will what ascend? I will exalt my throne even above the stars of God. But God loved as he as he loves us. God loved Nebuchadnezzar. He loved that heathen king, and and God was determined to do everything that he could to save Nebuchadnezzar, right? Even if that meant taking away Nebuchadnezzar's Nebuchadnezzar's sanity for seven years, which God did because God knew that that's what was needed to save Nebuchadnezzar's soul. How many of you are thankful that God will do whatever is necessary to save our souls? Even if it causes us pain and 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 disappointment and disillusionment in the interim. God loves us too much to not do what is necessary to do anything within his power to save our souls. And so he did what was necessary to save Nebuchadnezzar's soul, to teach Nebuchadnezzar a lesson. There's a key phrase in Daniel, chapter four, that you're well aware of, that where God is is telling Nebuchadnezzar that essentially, if you do not humble yourself, that this will happen to you because you need to know that it's not you, Nebuchadnezzar, that rules in the kingdom of men, but it is the Most High that rules in the kingdom of men. Right? Nebuchadnezzar, you need to do away with this self-exalting spirit, which is not of me, which does not represent me, but represents the true king of Babylon, Satan himself. Daniel, chapter, okay, so what do we learn? We've learned from Daniel, chapter four, and again, I'm sorry, I'm not going to put the 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 chapters, verse by verse, on the screen. If I did that, we would be here for at least two hours. We're just going to summarize. But here in Daniel, chapter four, we see that Babylon represents a a spirit of self-exaltation. Daniel, chapter one demonstrates Babylon representing debilitating mentally and physically debilitating food and drink that undermine that can undermine one's relationship with God. Daniel, chapter four establishes Babylon as representing this this spirit of self-exaltation. Nebuchadnezzar was a self-exalting person before his conversion. Nebuchadnezzar resembled, his actions resembled the true king of Babylon before his conversion. Daniel, chapter five, what is Daniel, chapter five about? Well, Daniel, chapter five describes the very sad and Well, Daniel, chapter five, uh, describes the very sad and sobering story of Nebuchadnezzar's grandson, uh, uh, king, uh, Belshazzar. And King El- Belshazzar, like his grandfather before his conversion was what? He was also haughty. He was also arrogant. And unfortunately, King Belshazzar did not learn the lessons of, of his father Nebuchadnezzar. And what did, uh, King Belshazzar do? As Daniel, chapter five describes it, well, King Belshazzar encouraged God's people in idolatry. He used the sacred instruments from God's sanctuary to worship and to give praise to inanimate objects. Now, again, we're just doing a summary here. Go back, if, if you're not familiar with these chapters in Daniel, go back after the study. Review, study those chapters on your own. Hopefully you'll see that, that, that what I am, um, describing to you about these chapters is accurate. But, um, King Belshazzar, uh, worshipped other gods. He was not a, unlike his grandfather, he was not a believer in the true God or the creator God. And he, King Belshazzar, uh, worshipped other gods, the gods of silver, the gods of gold, the gods of wood, the gods of stone. Uh, he encouraged his people to do the same. Uh, he encouraged God's people in idolatry. He used the sacred instruments from God's sanctuary to worship and to praise inanimate objects. So. What does this add to the picture? What does this specifically tell us about Babylon? What it tells us is that Babylon also represents idolatry in all of its forms. And keep in mind, these are all things that the true king of Babylon represents. Self-exaltation, idolatry. Uh, eating and consuming food and drink that undermines one relationship with God. These are all things that the king of Babylon, uh, stands for. But Belshazzar, again, encouraged his people to worship the gods of silver and gold and stone. In this day and age, we've got our idols, don't we? You know, we like to look back at, at some of these, uh, biblical characters. We like to look, uh, look back at some of these individuals and say to ourselves arrogantly and sort of in this self-righteous tone, well, how could they do that? Why are you worshiping of silver and, and gold and stone as opposed to the God who's done, uh, so much for you? But we do the same. We have our gods of, of whatever, of vehicles, you know? The, the, we, some of us serve the god of Mercedes Benz. You know, some of us serve the god of six-figure salaries. You know, some of us serve the god of, of, of material possessions, you know? Obsessing over living in a certain type of home. You know, for material possessions, some of us are willing to sacrifice not only our relationship with God, but our relationship with other people. Just so we can obtain, uh, certain material possessions. So we're no different than Belshazzar. And the people of his day, they worship their gods, we worship our gods. But all of it is an abomination to God. All of it represents Babylon. All of it demonstrates what the true king of Babylon represents. And then finally, let's, let's focus on the, the, the two chapters in Daniel, which uh, are, are, are most relevant to our discussion today. Daniel, chapter three. Daniel, chapter three and Daniel, chapter six. We know Daniel, chapter three is a, and I'm, we're, we're doing this a, a bit out of chronological order. But Daniel, chapter three is a chapter where Nebuchadnezzar does what? Well, he's upset because God has basically told him in Daniel, chapter two, that his kingdom will not last forever. And he builds or erects, constructs this golden statue, this golden image, which in reality, in his mind, represented him, right? It represented him, the king of Babylon. Uh, 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 Babylon, the kingdom that despite what God had told him would stand forever. Now, Nebuchadnezzar was the king of Babylon. He was a state figure. And Nebuchadnezzar, as a state figure, in Daniel, chapter three issued an edict. The edict that said what? You will worship this image, this image that essentially represented him, or you will die. You will worship this image, or you will, will die. Nebuchadnezzar, listen to me, this is important. Nebuchadnezzar, a state figure with this command passed essentially an edict or a law that had a religious purpose. And what was that religious purpose? The religious purpose was worship, right? We see a state figure using his state power to advance a religious purpose. A religious purpose that resulted in what? Persecution. Persecution of God's people and anyone else who refused to worship his image. So what we are actually seeing here, pay attention to me. And revelate in Daniel, chapter three, what we are actually seeing here is Nebuchadnezzar as a state figure uniting with religion. You, 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 uniting with religion to accomplish a religious purpose. The religious purpose being that of, of, of persecution. So this is important. You need to understand this about Babylon. We've talked about some of the features of Babylon here. But, but the, 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 the feature of Babylon that we're going to spend the rest of our time talking about, uh, for the rest of this lecture is this. A key feature of Babylon is the state clasping hands with religion or with the church to compel the conscience, even under the threat of death. That is the, that is a key feature of Babylon. And we see this same principle play itself out even in Daniel, chapter six. Now, uh, Darius, this describes, uh, there, uh, Daniel, chapter six describes Daniel when he's an older man. Uh, Babylon, uh, has been conquered, uh, by the media Persian empire. Um, so, Belshazzar has been killed. Darius the Mede becomes king according to Daniel, chapter six. But Darius the Mede, uh, followed in line of this, followed in, was, was a figure who followed in line of this succession of these particular kings of Babylon. And we know the story of Darius the Mede. He was influenced by his officials to again, uh, issue an edict. Uh, oh, he was influenced, yes, influenced by the issue, the officials within his kingdom to issue an edict, which basically said that you pray to me and to me only for this particular period. And anyone that doesn't pray only to me, essentially anyone who does not worship me during this particular period is to be killed. And we know what happened, Daniel. Being the man of, 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 of faith that he was, refused to follow that edict and was not even comfortable with exercising his faith in a private manner, amen? Daniel had to make it known to the king and to whomever else that he prays not to a man, but to the almighty God, the creator God. And, and, and Daniel, uh, uh, engaged in actions that made that clear, which resulted in him being condemned to death. But God, praise God, he, uh, he was delivered, uh, from that lion's pit. And then God used Daniel powerfully to minister to King Darius and to ultimately convert, uh, King Darius. But we see the same principle in Daniel six that we see in Daniel, chapter three. This, this principle of the state clasping hands with religion to advance a religious purpose, right? A religious purpose that results in persecution. And persecution in its worst forms, which is murder. So I'll say it again because this is so important for us to understand. A key feature of Babylon is the church forming union with the state to compel the conscience. Now, because we know that this is a key feature of Babylon, we also know that this is a key attribute or characteristic of the anti-type king of Babylon who was Satan. Each of the stories that we covered represents principles or characteristics, not just of Nebuchadnezzar before his conversion, not just of Belshazzar or Darius the Mede, but of Satan himself, the king of Babylon in substance. Their actions symbolize the actions or characteristics of the true king who was Lucifer. And again, the last two examples that we gave make abundantly clear that one of Satan's chief aims is to compel or control your conscience. One of Satan's chief aims is to compel or control your conscience. And to compel and control your conscience to what end? Satan wants to compel and control your conscience to what end? Well, you know, it's actually rare in scripture to find Satan actually showing himself. Uh, actually showing himself. You know, you, we, we don't see many instances in scripture where, where, where Satan actually sort of appears, um, to whomever. You know, we don't see very many instances in scripture where Satan, uh, we see or read Satan actually speaking. And so whenever we see Satan, Satan's talked about a lot more often than he actually, he's talked, talked about a lot more in, in scripture than he is actually, uh, seen appearing or actually speaking. But when we see Satan appear and when we see Satan speaking in scripture, that's important. We, we need to pay close attention to what Satan is saying. And, uh, for us to, to really understand, you know, to, to what aim Satan, uh, seeks to control the conscience, we need to go, to go to scripture and look specifically at, uh, a story that many of us are familiar with. The story of, of Christ in the wilderness when he was being tempted by Satan. And the Bible is clear, um, that the last temptation that, uh, that, 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 that came to Christ uh, by Satan, uh, when, when Christ was, was, was at his, his, probably his weakest point physically, uh, when he may even have been struggling spiritually because he hadn't eaten, he hadn't, uh, 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 consumed any water. He was literally starving to death, uh, in the wilderness, in obedience to his father's commandment. And, and this last, but this last temptation that Satan, um, offered to Jesus is a temptation that I believe really encapsulate, encapsulates what Lucifer ultimately wants to accomplish in this great controversy. What he wanted to ultimately accomplish in the courts of heaven. What he wanted to accomplish after the fall of humanity and what he seeks to accomplish now. I believe that what, the words that he utters in this last temptation to Jesus encapsulate all of that. And the Bible says, and again, the devil took him up on an exceedingly high mountain and showed him all the kingdoms of the world and their glory. And he said to me, him, all these things I will give you if you will fall down and worship me. What did Nebuchadnezzar say? Essentially, when he created that, that image, right? He was saying, worship me, right? Representative of what the true king of Babylon has always desired, has always wanted. That has always been been his chief aim, worship. Here Satan acknowledges to Jesus what his true desire has been from the very beginning of the great controversy, worship. He desires to be worshiped as God. He is so delusional, in fact, in this thought, that we see here that he inexplic- inexplicably is trying to command the very being that created him to worship him as God. Now, Christ said, no. Christ in his humanity declared to the very being that he created that he worships God and God alone. But what was the result? What was the result of Christ rejecting Satan's commands to worship him? And then, and, and, and again, we gotta make sure that we're drawing the parallels here. Nebuchadnezzar, representing in type the king of Babylon says, worship me or you die, right? Darius the Mede, you know, before God was, was, was able to convert him, uh, tells his subjects, worship me or you die. When Christ rejected Satan's command to worship him, what did that ultimately result in? Well, I think we all know the answer to this question, but let's go to scripture to confirm that answer. John, chapter nineteen, verses fifteen through seventeen. Bible says, but they cried out, away with him, away with him, crucify him. Pilate said to them, shall I crucify your king? The chief priests answered, we have no king but Caesar. Then he delivered him to them to be crucified. So they took Jesus and led him away. The Jews. You may say the Jews were responsible for crucifying Jesus. You may say the Romans ultimately were cr- uh, responsible for crucifying Jesus. But in reality, it was the king of Babylon, the true king of Babylon, who was orchestrating all of this, right? He was the one, Satan was the one who was ultimately responsible for Jesus's death. He was the one who was ultimately responsible for Jesus's murder. Now, take note that the Jews could not kill Jesus on their own. They could not crucify him on their own, right? The Jews couldn't even condemn Jesus to death on their own. What did the Jews have to do to accomplish their murderous purposes? The Jews had to clasp hands with Caesar, right? The Jews had to clasp hands with the state, with Pontius Pilate, with Caesar to accomplish their religious purpose of killing Jesus whom they viewed as a blasphemer. So just as with Nebuchadnezzar, just as with King Darius, we see a state figure, or we see the state who in this case is, 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 is Caesar or Rome. And then we see the church, we see the Jews, the church forming a union with the state to accomplish the religious purpose of persecution and of killing Jesus. This all happens after Satan offers Jesus the world, right? If he worships him, Jesus says, no, I will not do that. Satan then orchestrates Jesus's death. Nebuchadnezzar, Satan instigates him to, uh, uh, pass this edict that says, worship me or you die. Satan himself instigating Darius to issue this edict or proclamation that says, worship me or you die. Hopefully you are seeing a recurring pattern here throughout scripture of how the true king of Babylon, uh, how he moves, how he acts, what he does in response to individuals who refuse to, that, that, that will not allow their consciousnesses to be compelled by him. Individuals who refuse Individuals who refuse to worship him. Now I thank God that Jesus did die, amen. You know, the devil, he overplayed his hand and did not realize that the death that he was orchestrating would ultimately result in, in, in life, eternal life to countless individuals. So ultimately, I, I, we all thank God for Jesus's death. We thank God for his life, death, and his resurrection. But let me ask you this. Now, if Jesus had agreed to worship Satan, do you believe that Satan would have orchestrated his death? If Jesus had agreed to worship Satan, do you believe that Satan would have orchestrated his death? I think the answer to that question is of course, no. Do you believe that if Jesus acquiesced to Satan compelling his conscience to worship him, that Satan would have orchestrated his death? I think the answer to that question is no. Friends, death in scripture, death and persecution always result when we say no to Satan's attempt to compel the conscience. Death and persecution always result when we say no to Satan's attempts to worship him. And when we say no, as we have seen in scripture, Satan will always instigate the joining or the union of church and state to accomplish his purposes of persecution and murder. And again, remember, we touched, we focused on this a lot in our last study, but remember what, what Jesus said, "Render unto Caesar the things that are Caesar's." Render unto God the things that are God. The Bible is clear that we owe God and God alone our worship. We don't owe that to any other man, any man that seeks to compel the conscience any, by uh, ordering our worship of him or her. That is in express, obviously in express violation of, of what God has, has commanded us to do. But Satan, he will always, he will always, as, as scripture has shown us, instigate this joining of church and state to accomplish his uh, purposes of religious persecution and murder. Um, I believe that this, 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 this quote right here, this is a quote that I read for you last time. But this quote right here, I think summarizes everything that we've discussed up to this point. God never forces the will or the conscience, but Satan's constant resort is to what? To gain control of those whom he cannot otherwise seduce is compulsion by cruelty. Compulsion by cruelty through what? Through fear or force he endeavors to do what? Rule the conscience. And we've seen that, right? We've given example after example after example of this throughout scripture. Through fear or force he endeavors to rule the conscience and to, and to secure homage to himself. To accomplish this, he works through both religious and secular authorities, religious and secular authorities, moving them to the enforcement of human laws in defiance of the law of God. And this quote is taken from the Great Controversy, page eighty-eight. Now, we need to uh, continue to um, look to the word of God to understand how this, this principle that we've been discussing applies in our day and how it will apply in the future. We want to make sure that we understand the prophetic application of this principle. Prophetic application of this principle is found in a chapter of the Bible that I know most of us are familiar with. Revelation, chapter thirteen, verses eleven through fifteen. Revelation, chapter thirteen, verses eleven through fifteen. This is a chapter that um, as Adventists, we've studied and over and over and over again, and prayed over, over and over, over again, trying to, and, and, and the founders of, of, of this movement prayed over repeatedly to gain insight and understanding. Revelation, chapter thirteen, verses eleven through fifteen. Bible uh, says that, "And I beheld another beast coming up out of the earth, and he had two horns like a lamb, and he spake as a what? As a dragon." Who's the dragon? The dragon, um, uh, the Bible makes clear that the dragon is none other than Satan himself. And actually, other passages found in Revelation. "And he exerciseth all the power of the first beast before him, and causeth the earth and them which dwell therein to worship the first beast, whose deadly wound was healed. And he doeth great wonders, so that he maketh fire to come down from heaven on the earth and the side of men. And he deceiveth them that dwell on the earth by the means of those miracles which he had power to do in the sight of the beast, saying to them that dwell on the earth, that they should make an image to the beast which had the wound by a sword and did live." Verse fifteen. "And he had power to give life unto the image of the beast, that the image of the beast should both speak and cause that as many as would not worship the image of the beast should be killed." This lamb, this lamb that the Bible describes as speaking as like a dragon. Who's the dragon? Well, we know that the dragon is Satan. Satan is the dragon. But specifically, the, 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 the verses that we just read. How does this lamb-like beast speak like a dragon? Well, the beast speaks like a dragon. The beast speaks like Satan by telling them that dwell on the earth that they should do what, right? That they should make this image to the beast. But not only this, not only this, these verses make clear that this lamb-like beast speaks like a dragon by causing everyone, including this image to the beast, including this image to the beast, to kill anyone who does not worship this image of the beast. Now we have gone through multiple biblical examples illustrating that this is how Satan speaks. He compels you directly or indirectly to worship him. And if you refuse to do so, like with the three Hebrew boys, like with Daniel, like with Jesus, he plots and he works through wicked men to persecute you, and ultimately he tries to take your life. He instigates the church to join hands with the state to compel your conscience. And if you refuse to do so, he seeks to accomplish your death. But the phrase "image to the beast", this phrase "image to the beast", how do we know what this image to the beast actually is? How do we know what this image to the beast actually is? And I realize I'm, I'm, I'm talking to those who, who are, are well familiar with this, 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 this chapter, but didn't understand it probably better than I do, but stick with me. How do we know what this image to the beast is? Well, Revelation, chapter thirteen, verses eleven through fifteen. The verses that we just read make clear that this image to the beast relates to what? It relates to worship. Again, that the image of the beast, verse fifteen says it, that the image of the beast should both speak and cause that as many as would not worship, worship, cause as many that would not worship the image of the beast should be killed. So this image of the beast relates to worship. This image being instigated by the dragon that commands you to either worship it or die. Now friends, which biblical command connects most explicitly to the worship of the true God? The Creator God? Which biblical command connects most closely with that? Oh, as Seventh-day Adventists, those of us that are Seventh-day Adventists on this call, we know what command that is. That command is found in, in multiple places in scripture, but perhaps most prominently in Exodus, chapter twenty, verses eight through eleven. "We know the command, remember the Sabbath day to keep it holy. Six days shalt thou labor and do all thy work; but the seventh day is the Sabbath of the Lord thy God. In it thou shalt not do any work, thou nor thy son, nor thy daughter, nor thy man servant, nor thy maid servant, nor thy cattle, nor thy stranger that is within thy gates." Why does God say to cease from your labors on the Sabbath? On this particular day? What ceasing from your work, from your labors on the Sabbath signifies what? To the world? If you do that, that signifies what to the world according to God? For in six days the Lord made heaven and earth, the sea, and all that is that in them is, and rested the seventh day, where for the Lord blessed the Sabbath day and all of it. When you rest on the seventh day, what does it communicate? What does it signify? What does it represent? It represents you, that you are a believer and the Creator God. The Creator God that in six days, right? Made heaven and earth and everything else that we see in the natural world. Means that you, you are very specific in, in who you worship. And it is very important to you that the manner of your worship signifies who you are actually worshiping, right? Okay. Revelation, chapter fourteen, verse seven also makes this point. "Then I saw another angel flying in the midst of heaven, having the everlasting gospel to preach to those who dwell on the earth, to every nation, tribe, tongue, and people, saying with a loud voice, 'Fear God and give glory to him, for the hour of his judgment has come,' and to worship him who made heaven and earth and the sea and the springs of water." Which of God's commandments most connects to uh, signifying who you are worshiping? That is the fourth commandment. That is the Sabbath commandment. The Sabbath commandment um, is exceedingly deep and broad in its significance. I think A.T. Jones once said that the Sabbath is a sign of everything that Christ is to the believer. The Sabbath is a sign of everything that Christ is to the believer. Is the Sabbath a sign of, of sanctification? Yes, it is. Bible tells us that, I believe in Exodus, chapter thirty-one, verse thirteen. Sabbath is a sign of our sanctification. Sabbath is a sign that we believe that, 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 that God is, 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 is the Lord, our God. Um, but the Sabbath is also a sign, keeping the Sabbath is a sign that we believe in the Creator God. We don't even get to justification by faith or sanctification by faith or righteousness by faith as a whole. We don't even get to that if we were not created, right? It started, it all started with God creating us. Right? God's, his, his, his greatest demonstration outside of saving us, his greatest demonstration that he loved us was the fact that he created us. And the Sabbath is the telltale sign of the believer that the believer believes that, that God in Christ is the one that created him. So um, the Sabbath is, 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 is significant and it, it relates most explicitly, it connects most explicitly to worship. Revelation, chapter thirteen, says that this, this image to the beast, this image will compel those to worship it or they die. Um, that's dragon speak. That's, that's Satan's speak. So this, this image to the beast, we know, which requires your death if you don't worship it, it, it must point to something else. It most, it must point to the worship of something or someone else other than the Creator God. It must, this image to the beast must point to the worship of something else other than the Creator God. Some of you may not know this, many of you may. The first Sunday worship law that was passed in Earth's history was passed by the Roman emperor Constantine. Constantine was a pagan worshiper, but uh, was converted, claimed that he was out in battle and saw this cross that was, that was sort of lit up in the sky. This, this cross light in the sky and seeing that vision convinced him that, that Jesus Christ was real and that Christ was his savior. So after that event, he converted to Christianity. Um, and actually legally, he was the person responsible for legalizing Christianity. You know, we know that the, the Christians were, uh, after Christ's death, under emperors such as Nero and, and others, Roman emperors such as Nero and others, Christians were, were tortured and persecuted. Constantine converted to Christianity. He, he ended the persecution of Christians. Um, and also was the one responsible for passing the first Sunday worship law. This is some of the language from that law. I've, I've placed it here on the screen. "On the venerable day of the sun," he says, "let the magistrates and people living in towns rest, and let all workshops be closed. Nevertheless, in this country, those engaged in the cultivation of land may freely and lawfully work, because it often happens that another day is not so well fitted for sowing and, and planting vines." So there is an exception to this, this general rule of non-labor on the venerable day of the sun. It's interesting that that, that phrase there is used, "On the venerable day of the sun." Constantine was a Christian at the time. Constantine is issuing this edict commanding Sunday worship, not because of Christ, although history tells us that that was partly the reason why this edict was issued. It was partly because of Constantine feeling the importance of celebrating the day that Christ was, the, the day that Christ was resurrected. That's not mentioned, however, in the language of this edict. The only thing that's mentioned as sort of the motivation behind this Sunday law is the, is the venerable day of the sun. Nothing about Jesus. Uh, only language suggesting here in this edict that is the sun that should be reverenced in worship. So it's, if, if, if you study this out, if, if you, if you uh, take some time and, and read, you know, just go on Wikipedia. Wikipedia will make this point clear. What you'll discover is that the key motivation behind this, this Sunday law enactment, this Sunday worship law was to show reverence to the sun god, Sol Invictus, one of Rome's most prominent and universally accepted pagan gods. The Romans, you know, leading up to Constantine's emperorship and even during Constantine's emperorship, the Romans had established elaborate rituals to pay homage and, and to worship this, this, this sun god, Invictus. And they would offer sacrifices to him. But what's critical here is that, again, the key motivation behind this first Sunday worship law was to pay homage and to reverence a pagan god. Now, as many of us know, the apostle Paul, he lived during Roman's rule. The apostle Paul, as we know, was exposed to the lit, to the litany of, of pagan gods that the Romans worship. Uh, the apostle Paul was, was aware of these things. And, and what did, did Paul specifically have to say about these pagan gods? Gods such as the sun god, Sol Invictus, that the Romans worship? This God who served as one of the key sort of motivating purposes behind the enactment of this first, this first Sunday worship law, first Sunday worship law in world history. Well, this is what, what Paul says. Here it is. I'm going a little bit out of order with these cries. This is what Paul says. He says, "What am I saying then? That an idol is anything, or what is offered to idols is anything? Rather, that the things which the Gentiles sacrificed, they sacrificed to who? To demons and not to God, and I do not want you to have fellowship with demons." So Paul makes clear here in First Corinthians, chapter ten, that these pagan gods are actually demons. Gods such as Sol Invictus, they are actually demons. The Romans may not have realized this. The Romans may not have realized this or known this, but the reality, the reality is that recognizing Sunday as the authoritative day of worship to show homage to the pagan god Sol Invictus actually represented the worship of a demon. And friends, who is the chief demon? Who is the head of the demonic host? That's Satan. Satan here. Using, right? Using, using men, using the state, right? Using Constantine. To secure homage to himself through a law that emphasizes Sunday sacredness. Sol Invictus was a pagan god. Paul says that pagan gods are the worship of, of pagan gods, offering sacrifices to pagan gods is the worshiping of demons. Satan is the chief demon. Again, Constantine may not have recognized it as such, but by issuing this edict, he was actually, uh establishing unwittingly the worship of, of a demonic host. Friends, Satan will take your worship even with you being unwitting about it. Satan would rather you worship him indirectly out of ignorance if it is between this and you not worshiping him at all. Let's go to some more recent history. Okay. We, we talked earlier about how A T Jones, the, the information that I'm sharing with you. A, a, a large portion of it. You know, I, I didn't, you know, I, I borrowed heavily from, from some of the discourses that, or lectures that Jones uh gave at the eighteen eighty-eight conference in Minneapolis. And um the, the backdrop, the historical backdrop behind Jones giving those messages was what was taking place in the United States at that time, land of the free, home of the brave. The land or the, 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 the country whose core foundational principle, one of its core foundational government principles was religious liberty. Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of a religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. That was one of the core democratic principles that this country was founded upon. Yet in eighteen eighty-eight, there was a U S senator whose name was Henry Blair. That particular senator advanced Sunday law legislation for passage in the U S Senate. Specifically, and, and this, this isn't the legislation, this is another piece of legislation that I'm going to talk about in a moment, but Henry Blair's specific legislation required that no one work on Sunday. And if they did, they should be criminally fined. So. First Sunday law in world history passed centuries earlier. But we see history once again repeating itself in this country. This country that prides itself on being this bastion of religious uh liberty and tolerance, this country that says that, no, here you do not have to worry about the government dictating you as to how you should wor- worship. You don't have to worry about how uh the government dictating to you uh in terms of compelling your conscience. Yet in eighteen eighty-eight, we have a U S senator advancing Sunday law legislation. A T Jones actually goes and, and, and argues against this legislation at a U S senate, at a U S senate committee hearing. That, now that particular piece of legislation, Henry Blair's Sunday law legislation. Because God used Elder Jones to effectively argue against that legislation. That particular piece of legislation was not passed. This piece of legislation that I'm showing in front of you was passed. This was a Arkansas law that was passed in eighteen eighty-five. Eighteen eighty-five. And, 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 and note the language in this law. Every person who shall on the Sabbath or Sunday be found laboring or should compel his apprentice or servant to labor or perform service other than customary household duties, duties of daily necessity, comfort, or charity on conviction. So if you do this, you are going to be criminally convicted. On conviction thereof shall be fined one dollar for each separate offense. One dollar was a lot of money back in those days. Every apprentice or servant compelled to labor on Sunday shall be deemed a separate offense of the master. The provision of this act shall not apply to steamboats and other vessels navigating the waters of the state nor such manufacturing establishments as required to be kept in continual operation. Friends, and you'll read this in Jones' book, uh Civil Government and Religious Duty. There were numerous Seventh-day Adventists who were convicted, criminally convicted of this law during this time, numerous Seventh-day Adventists. And it's sad to read some of their stories. There's a story, I believe, of a pastor who was out doing some work in his garden. Someone saw him doing this and basically went to a, a judge or a public official and, and told them that he was violating this law. He was brought to court. He was criminally convicted. He couldn't even pay the fine. He couldn't, he did not, this, this particular pastor, SDA pastor, did not have enough money to pay the fine. And what they basically did is they threatened him. They threatened him with involuntary servitude, basically saying that you will be taken away from your, whatever your work is, you will be taken away from your family. You will be forced to work for a particular person for a period of time so that you can pay off this fine, a sort of forced slavery. And thank God, there were people that came to his aid and he was, he, he was able to pay this fine. But again, so this is eighteen eighty-eight, eighty-six, eighteen eighty-eight happens just a few years later. And I find it so fascinating. I find it so fascinating that the message that God gave to this church to lighten the earth with his glory and to prepare his people, and I'm, I'm quoting Ellen White, and to prepare his people to stand in the day of God was that message was given against this backdrop in U S history, right? And we know from the word of God and from the spirit of prophecy that the United States is that lamb-like beast that's represented in Revelation chapter thirteen. We know from the word of God and from the spirit of prophecy that Revelation chapter thirteen essentially describes United States government clasping hands with the papal power to introduce legislation or to pass legislation that violates or compels the conscience. To the end, Sunday worship laws whose original motivation original motivation was to worship the sun god. Who Paul tells us, those type of gods, they're satanic, they're demons. So I find it fascinating that, that the most precious message that, that, that God gave to this church was given against this historical backdrop. But the key here, uh, in, in this sort of prophetic application that we've been talking about in Revelation chapter thirteen, um, the, the key here in this prophetic application is, is us sort of seeing this recurring pattern of, of Satan. Again, instigating the, the, the union of church and state to enact laws that compel the conscience, laws that compel the conscience to worship Satan himself. This is a critical feature of Babylon that must be known, understood, and recognized by God's people in these last days. Now, we're, we are, we are out of time, but let's, let's go through the rest of this quickly. Bible tells us what? We've been talking about one particular, focusing mostly on one particular feature of Babylon. Bible tells us that Babylon has what? Revelation chapter fourteen eighteen, Babylon the great is fallen, is fallen, is become what? Become a habitation of devils and the hold of every foul spirit and a cage of every unclean and hateful bird. Skipping down to verse four, it says, and I heard another voice from heaven saying, come out of her, my people, that we be not partakers of her sin. So in closing, I want to highlight just a few biblical principles that um, I believe if, if we, if, if we believe these principles and practice these principles, these principles will empower us to reject this principle or feature of Babylon. This principle of church-state union acting together to enact laws that compel the conscience. What's the first principle? Well, the first principle that will empower us to uh reject this sort of, this feature of Babylon is principle of citizenship. Bible says that our citizenship is not of this earth, but our citizenship is where it is in heaven, from which we also eagerly await for the Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. So I'm a dual citizen. I, you know, I was born here in this country, United States, so I'm a natural born citizen of the United States, but that's not my primary citizenship. My primary citizenship is the kingdom of God, right? I am a citizen of the kingdom of the Most High God. That is my primary citizenship. And it, Jones has something interesting, A T Jones has something interesting to say about our primary citizenship. He says, now as our citizenship, the citizenship of every Christian is in heaven. What has any citizen of heaven or of the heavenly government rightly to do with the political or governmental affairs of any other government or any other kingdom? In fact, what has a citizen of any government rightly to do with the political concerns or management of any other government? So now some of you may work in a governmental capacity, and I'm not at all suggesting that you doing that line of work is sinful, but what I am saying is that we have to be careful. Um, we need to understand that our primary allegiance is owed to God. And our primary purpose is to, is to serve him, is to reflect him, and is to be concerned about his business, right? Our primary responsibility as Christians is to be concerned about uh, uh, God's business. And, and not the business of politics, not the, the, the business of governmental affairs, uh, which all represent i- in a very real way, the world. Um. Second principle, now then we are ambassadors for Christ, as though God were pleading through us. We implore you on Christ's behalf, be reconciled to God. So not only are we uh, not only is our citizenship in heaven, but we are ambassadors of the most. We are ambassadors for Christ. We are ambassadors for Christ. Uh, Jones has this to say. He says, an ambassador is one sent. An ambassador is one sent and accredited by one government as a representative of that government to another country. Now, the principle of ambassadorship prohibits him from any interference, whatever with the political concerns of the government to which he is accredited. Jones has to say about this principle of ambassadorship. As an ambassador for Christ, you know, I don't live to promote, I live to promote the principles of Christ's kingdom, right? It is not my job as a Christian ambassador to be burdened or concerned with the political issues that are going on in my country. To the extent that I'm more concerned about those issues than the issues that God wants me to, can be concerned uh with. Cause again, I've been sent by God to wherever I am. So I need to be concerned about the, the issues and the concerns from the place where I've been sent, right? Which is the kingdom of God. More concerned about that than I am concerned about the political issues of, of where I am. So as an ambassador of Christ, I live to promote the principles of Christ's kingdom. It is not my job as a Christian ambassador to be burdened or concerned with the political issues of the United States government, which is where I live. I live my life as an ambassador for Christ to reveal the character of God, not the character of, of government, the, the government or its officials. And let's see. Jesus, finally, Jesus said, my kingdom is not of this world. John eighteen, chapter thirty-six, my kingdom is not of this world. If my kingdom were of this world, my servants would fight so that I should not be delivered to the Jews, but now my kingdom is not from here. So look, if Jesus says my kingdom is not of this world and we are followers of Christ, our citizenship is where he is right now, right? We are his ambassadors. If, if he declares that his kingdom is not of this world, you know, why should our convictions be any different than Jesus's? If, if, if Jesus during his entire life was only concerned about advancing the kingdom of God, why should we as his followers be concerned about advancing the kingdom of men at the expense of advancing the kingdom of God? And, you know, I, I don't know what the political climate is in your country, in the United States. We had an election. A certain person won and there are individuals that voted for that person who are now saying, okay, God has now given us a mandate to work with this present, president to advance certain religious legislation, Christian education, uh, Christian legislation. There was a law that was passed down in Louisiana here a few years ago. It's up for constitutional challenge in the courts, but it's a, a, a law that basically said that the Ten, Ten Commandments must, kind of a portrait of the Ten Commandments must be placed in every uh elementary, middle, and public school. That, that must happen, which I, I believe is, is a violation of the First Amendment. But in, in, in any event, we never see Christ in his life appealing to Caesar or appealing to any government official to advance his kingdom, right? Never do we see that. Never do we see Christ making agreements with the Pharisees or the Sadducees or even any Roman officials to advance his kingdom. No. Christ to advance his kingdom relied only upon God, upon the Holy Spirit. And what did he do to advance his kingdom? He commissioned weak and failing men like you and I to go and, and preach the gospel. He, Jesus set the blueprint. He set the example. Okay? And the example is, look, the government is not needed to convert the hearts of men. Religious legislation is not needed to convert the hearts of men. All that is needed is you receiving me into your heart, receiving the Holy Spirit and allowing me to use you to reflect my character to the world. That's all that is needed. So we would do well to follow the example of Christ. And if we do that, we will help protect ourselves from this feature of Babylon, this church union feature of Babylon, which is soon to rear its ugly head again. Specifically in this country where I live, the United States. So thank you for your time.
Right? We wanna thank Ellen Anderson for taking us on that journey of the coming out of Babylon. Of course, we are very close. But some of us, it's already there in the challenge of making that, that choice. Uh, to be out or to be in. So we want to just openly throw for a few questions or comments uh, from the folks who've been online. But before we do such, I just want us to bow our heads again in prayer as we give God thanks. And as we pray Father in heaven. We just pause again and, and thank you for your word that continued to remind and to enlighten us of even the challenges that we face. Who is behind, as it were, the whole Babylonian system? And Christ being our guide, our Savior, our Lord. We pray as we, we discuss around this presentation. Your presence be with us and that you continue to enlighten us and even prepare us. and even prepare us and fill us and lead us in your part of righteousness for your namesake. So though we should even walk in the valley of the shadow of death, we fear no evil. Uh fix our hearts in in that way so that we can face the challenges of the time we live in. We give you thanks for doing all in your power to do this. And we thank you for even this privilege and this opportunity once more in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Okay, um, we just have a few minutes again, uh. Any questions or comments we want to make around the presentation? We invite you to do such at this time. Yeah. I don't know if it's because of the season, but like we're singing this song, Silent Night? But um Pastor Lou, are you there?
Um, good morning. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Oh, yes, I just want to say how blessed.
One sec, one sec, Pastor Lou. We have a sister, oh, making a statement or comment or question. Yes, sister. Sinclair?
Yes, I just want to say how blessed I am with the message. I give God thanks for the message. And I just want to say above everything that I've heard, I just want to give God thanks for the work of the Holy Spirit.
Praise the Lord.
Leading and guiding us into truth. Yes.
Amen, amen. Praise the Lord, sis. May God bless. Yes, any other comments or questions that we'd want to ask based on you around the presentation? So. Okay, so Elder Raj, seeing your hands up there? Yeah?
Yeah, yeah, morning, morning.
Morning.
Um. I like the historical overview and connections of the title of the message and the focus, yes. The question is, and thanks again, Elder Oliver, for that. Uh. Very clear overview or reflecting and even looking into the future as to how the amalgamation will continue. It it wouldn't change, it's the same principle. The concern I have or question is how well lately, we have been seeing some developments among us from a leadership perspective as a organization that seems to suggest or implies that that amalgamation is working effectively uh within our organization. Uh, how do we see that? Am I the only one seeing that or picking that up or? How do we see that? And how should we deal with it? Because like myself, there might be others who would be concerned and would be needing directive from us as leaders. You know, so how do we go forward with that? Um, striking a balance, especially, you know, you see the same circumstances that Jesus was faced with when he was here on earth with the leadership then. Uh, how how would you guide us along that path?
Elder Raj, can you kind of be more specific? And and tell me kind of what, because you're talking about this kind of amalgamation that you're seeing even within our church, can you?
Yeah, like, like.
I don't want to make you uncomfortable, but can you, what what specific, can you give me some specific examples? Or or a specific example that you're seeing?
We look at um leaders are telling us and 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 some of our history and information that we have is not that they are telling us one thing and doing another, but they have done contrary to what they are seemingly informing us of. So for example, we had lately Dr. Ganundi up. He openly said that we should be the leading entity or group in ecumenism. Making it out that ecumenism isn't so much of a dangerous thing, that's one. But when we understand what ecumenism is, it is giving allegiance and submission to the papacy. That's 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 where the big term ecumenism is leading us, right? And he said, we should be the leaders in that. And I mean, there are other other instances and a whole lot of things that we have done as an organization in terms of signing documents and so on, that the membership generally and beyond away, and leaders are giving us the impression also, the same leaders, that all is good. That's where, that's what I'm talking about. Maybe something else might play, I don't play it for you, I don't. Um. That's where it is.
Well, I mean, I I can. You know, the focus of of this talk has been on religious liberty and um the 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 example that you cite, I think, is 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 related to that subject. You know, if we if we believe the Bible and if we believe the Spirit of prophecy, we know that um um that the papacy will be heavily involved in restricting religious liberty. And so any attempts that church officials may make to um unite or in any way join hands with with that particular entity which represents that particular principle, you know, I I obviously think we need to be wary of, you know, I'm I'm not here to say that um obviously, there there will be the Catholic individuals that go to heaven. There'll probably be more Catholic individuals in heaven than maybe even Seventh Day Adventists, but we do know that uh the the origins of the Catholic Church are an origin that uh is one of, as you say, amalgamation, truth mixed with error, uh salvation by works, idolatry, it's sort of all mixed into their doctrine. So I do think we need to be wary of 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 uniting with with those entities that represent those principles. And I think that, you know, prayerfully, we need to consider, you know, voicing objections even to the powers that be. If we feel as if the power or powers that be are moving towards uniting or joining with an entity that represents the essentially satanic principles that we've been discussing during this study. So um, you know, Elder Jones in his day, um, when he, when he's, him and other Seventh Day Adventists, when they saw that their 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 God-given religious liberties were being violated or restricted, they spoke out. Um, I believe that they would have spoke out if they feel felt that that was being done even by conference leaders or officials within their own denomination. So um, if we strongly feel that those things are happening, I do think that we have an obligation to to voice our dissent and our objections. I don't know if that helps at all, but that's that's kind of my view on it.
So um, Ella Patel, seeing your hands up?
Good morning, Elders, and good morning, everyone on the platform. And of course, you know, I just want to say thank you, Elder Nelson, for that informative presentation and very, very relevant. So this time that we are in. Um, and I mean, relevant also to some of the discussions we've been having too on this platform uh concerning the the relevance of 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 Sabbath. And we understand uh the current Sabbath. I just want to thank you for the presentation. I want to highlight just some points you made that are very, you know, I I I find them very interesting and um you know, it enlightens me too, um, when you went back you know, to the biblical Sabbath, you know, um, to the the first Sabbath, you know, all the way back at creation. And and you pointed out that the Sabbath surrounds worship. And and that's that's such a big deal right there. I think that's the punchline um in in the presentation. And you 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 connected the issue of of Babylon to the idea that it, the 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 intent of this 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 issue and foundation on Babylon is also about worship. And then you pointed out a characteristic of how it goes about to accomplish this is to see seek that unification or amalg- amalgamation of church and state to to uh force the conscience to to receive worship. And and so you're you're showing the Sabbath is uh really given for the purpose of 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 worship. Uh, I hope I'm correct in trying to interpret what what I I receive um in what you're saying. So those those are very, very, very good points, but um based on some of the discussion we have, and and I like how you you actually point out the history of eighteen eighty-eight and the agitation of a national Sunday law and the fact that there was even laws prior to that. And I just want to also add that to, and I'm sure you're aware that there were Sunday laws from the sixteenth century uh in this very country and which are actually on the books today as blue laws. And there were persecution by uh the government of Sabbatarians, not Seventh Day Adventists, no, because we were never around. We were just from eighteen sixty-three years, you know, you could start counting from eighteen forty, but officially eighteen sixty-three, but the this, the the seven-day practice was hung before us were being persecuted in the sixteenth century on Sabbath. And the same thing you mentioned, the example of a pastor being persecuted. There were a case that I read of a brother who was doing the same thing, working in his in his field on Sunday, and the neighbor saw, called him out, and he was arrested. But in his case, as they uh levied a a fine against him, his conscience convicted him not to pay the fine. Not to pay the fine.
Hmm.
And it 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 and and he suffered confinement because he refused to pay the fine.
Wow.
And in his case, he had a young wife who had a a young child while he was in confinement. The child got sick because the mother was sick, right? And she was breastfeeding. And so the child got sick. The child died while he was in custody. And he came out and not only buried when he came out, his child, but also his wife who died. So so we're seeing as far back as the sixteenth century, which is not actually uh far from when this country got its its independence, seventeen ninety-eight, right, seventeen seventy-six. We're seeing that, you know, there was persecution for a national Sunday law, which today we have the 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 remnant of it or 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 what was left out of it as blue laws. Now, now, considering all of this and an agitation of eighteen eighty-eight, and we're seeing the movements now that are put to 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 see, to again repeat the history of Babylon, uniting church and state, you know, you you clearly put that well put in 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 Revelation thirteen. We are now discussing righteousness by faith on this platform as you have presented in your first statements from Elder Jones, as the prominent uh message that seems to coincide with the message of religious liberty, right? And and you highlighted that this not to supplant uh religious liberty is not to supplant righteousness by faith, but but to show what, why righteousness is by faith is necessary. I uh concerning amplifying religious liberty, that freedom, right? My main point here, and your points are very on and and spot on, spot on, uh addressing especially what's going on, are coming up, and we are seeing it happening in the current events, right? Uh, these groups of people around the current uh president-elect to support the idea that the country has gone from God. There's a need, and Sister White talks about that, you know, there's a need to to bring back the nation to God because of the far leftist movements, woke movements, LGB, you know, all these movements, they're seeking to bring back the country to God by by seeking to legislate their own religious belief, and they're advocating a Sunday law, which they call Sabbath. Sabbath, it's not even an idea that, okay, we are seeking, because in eighteen eighty-eight, when uh Sunday law was being agitated, it was not just a idea of a Sunday day worship, but they are describing it as Sabbath. Right? No. Let's tie this into some of the discussion we've been having on the platform, because I want to get your perspective on this now. Uh, uh, you know, I know you're dealing with religious liberty and the issue of Babylon seeking to force conscience. That is, you know, a a an issue, yes. But how do you see if we uh consider uh Christ uh and the importance of Paul calling Christ to calling the people, the Jews at the time, to to this rest in Christ, right, this rest in Christ. And, you know, the rest here that they knew the Jews at that time, when Paul called them, was Sabbath, Seventh Day Sabbath. When you speak to rest in Hebrew, especially Hebrew chapter four, when he spoke to rest uh in in Christ on this particular day, because he's not speaking of another day, was Sabbath, so they knew Seventh Day Sabbath as the death, the day of rest. But he was making a correlation by saying, there, we need to have this in Christ. But there are some ideas that because Jesus was doing, Paul was doing that, it 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 it, and Christ died, he fulfilled the law, including the Sabbath, that that means the Sabbath is no longer obligatory, right? We 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 don't have to be the Sabbath. Um, it's not the idea to to be saved. We all know, we don't do anything to be saved. We do for God because we are saved, we acknowledge his saving grace. So just let me clear up that. Right? So so that's not the concern for me. Right? Yes, the Jews were doing some of these things, you know, to feel to be saved or favored. But I'm saying what Paul was doing was making a correlation that though the Jews understood the Sabbath and the Sabbath rest, and so he was making a correlation of, he was using it as an illustration or metaphor to say, the same way you rest in Sabbath, Peter, rest in the Seventh Day Sabbath, the same way you are called to rest in Christ. And and I'm saying, does that fulfillment of Christ of the law in Romans, chapter ten, right, or Christ is the end of the law for righteousness, does it remove the 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 need and the obligation of worship for the Sabbath because Christ fulfilled the law? You know, that's that's kind of my question, because that's the kind of sentiments that I'm I'm receiving, that because Christ uh fulfilled a law, the the Sabbath is no longer obligatory. And and okay, you showed the Sabbath from the beginning as worship pointing to the Creator. And 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 connecting that in 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 Exodus twenty, showing that it's about creation and the Creator, and Sabbath is about worship. So if we're saying that Christ fulfilled the Sabbath and Sabbath, so Sabbath is no longer obligatory, what are your views in light of these arguments?
Yeah.
I don't know if you understand clearly what I was trying to say.
No, I I do. Thank you. Thank you, Elder. And I uh I I read some of the uh group chat discourse on the subject. Obviously, the focus of the of the presentation today was on one application of the Sabbath, which is the worship application, which I believe is a critical application. Because it's it's the worship, the worship application of 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 the Sabbath is 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 biblical and it's it's repeated. I mean, it's, we can see it in the Old and the New Testament. Um. The application of the Sabbath that you've been focusing on, I'll I'll call it the rest application of the Sabbath is also vitally important. Um, but, but I mean, we, we, we need to receive the, the, the full counsel of God from the Bible as it relates to the Sabbath. Again, I like the way Jones puts it. Jones says that the Sabbath is a sign of everything that, that Christ. He says the Sabbath is a sign of everything that Christ is to the believer. Um, Christ is our righteousness. Um, Christ did fulfill the law, right? The law demanded a perfect life, which Christ lived. The law demanded death to the sinner, which Christ died. So yes, that application of the Sabbath is there. It's real, it's biblical, and it's vital that we embrace that application of the Sabbath. But it's also vital that we embrace the worship application of the Sabbath, um, which is just as vital in, in, in my estimation. Because to reject the worship application of the Sabbath is to reject the biblical principle that the Sabbath is a key indicator of, of you believing that, that, that Christ is your creator. And again, if Christ is not, if Christ did not create us, we don't even get to these other subjects. We don't get to justification, saints. We, we don't get to these other things if, if, if Christ did not create us. And the Sabbath is a critical sign of that. And then once we see that that from, from scripture and from the spirit of prophecy, that that's this application of the Sabbath, you know, Satan, he will, he will assault this application um, to essentially, uh, compel individuals to, to worship him as opposed to worshiping the Creator God. I mean, I, I, I just think that the Bible is, is really clear on this point. I, I think it would be dangerous, extremely dangerous for us to say, well, because this particular application of the Sabbath, the, the, the resting in Christ application, salvation by grace through faith application has been established, then the other application isn't relevant or it does not apply. Bible does not support that. And I personally do not support that. So I don't, I don't know if that answers your question sufficiently, but that, that's my view. My view on it is that the Sabbath is obligatory. Um, now that's not to say that certainly we know from inspiration that there were many who, who, who have not kept the Sabbath, who will be in the kingdom of God. But speaking to God's people in these last days and, and speaking of individuals that have been convicted of the true significance of the Sabbath in all of its application, um, it's, it's salvation by grace through faith application, it's worship application. I don't know, like, how can you reject any of those applications and truly say that you are a follower of Christ? Like knowing that, that the Sabbath is sort of the, one of, one of the, if not the most prominent signs that you are someone who worship is, worships to Creator God. I mean, how, how can you as a true Christian just dismiss that applicant? Knowing that, knowing that truth and being convicted of that truth, how can you simply just dismiss that application and say that it's not relevant? So that's, that's, that's my view on it.
Yeah, I mean, you have, you have, you have nailed it in your response and, uh, uh, that, that's powerful. Um, uh, the response that they give and I, and you know, I'm satisfied. I just wanna also add that as you mentioned the issue of the movements of Babylon, uh, that are uniting as we see in Revelation thirteen with church and state. Again, their issue of that image of what, so it's two, two, two setting up of image, the image of uniting church and state and pointing to now that image of the beast itself in terms of what they, uh, 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 present as their authority, which is Sunday. And you mentioned Constantine setting up the first national Sunday law, right? That is, that's what they're calling people now to worship, right? Basically, this, this, this day, it is not just as a day, but they are describing it as a Sabbath, right? They're describing.
That's a good, that's an excellent, excellent point.
Yeah, they're describing it. So if we are saying, if we are saying the biblical seven days Sabbath is not obligatory, we will find that those who are promoting or proponents of, uh, uh, a Sunday is calling you now to worship their Sabbath, you know? And so, and they're saying it's, it's now obligatory. So even though they're, they're denying the law being obligatory, now they're advocating a Sabbath. This is not biblical to be obligatory and they are forcing it by law. So this will tell us clearly that of course, if man's Sabbath is obligatory, how could God's Sabbath not be obligatory? You know what I'm saying? So, so, so we, we gotta be careful. Like you say, it's very dangerous. We gotta be careful because in the end, when we say it, it doesn't matter what you, they, what you say, but it does matter. You know what I'm saying? It does matter because when Babylon, Satan, who's the author of Babylon, as you rightly put, start advancing his dragon speech through legislation, because we know the country speaks to its legislation. As it starts advancing that speech, the speech is to turn away from God's biblical Sabbath that points to the memorial of his creation and him as Creator to man's or Satan using man to, to, to uphold a day that's the venerable day of the sun, which is speaking to, to Satan's day or more of his Sabbath. So the truth is there's a contending issue here. And yes, righteousness by faith is the, the, the issue that points to Christ as Creator, him as the righteous one, him that will help us to stand and be loyal to him. You understand? And not to any day, whether it's Sunday or Saturday. But the sign of our loyalty will again be the seven day Sabbath. So we will stand for the seven day Sabbath even to the point of death. And that's why the Bible says we overcome by the blood of the lamb, righteousness by faith there, his righteousness, you know, revealed in his dying, we overcome by the blood of the lamb, the word of our testimony, and we love not our lives to the death. So we will keep this Sabbath, the seven day Sabbath, biblical Sabbath as a sign of our loyalty, the love for God. Thank you, my brother. Appreciate it.
Amen. That's beautiful. Thank you, Elder. That was so well put.
So I saw Sister Shabana's hand up earlier on, and this would be the last, um, comment or question we'd have here as we close this morning.
Morning, folks. I wanna thank Elder Nelson for the presentation. Um, Elder Nelson, can you in a nutshell explain Revelation fourteen eight to ten in light or in reference to your presentation?
Hmm, hmm. Revelation fourteen eight to ten. Let me look it up real quick. See.
And while you're looking it up, while you're looking it up, Elder Nelson, um, well, probably you or Ella Noble could, could explain or, or simplify the word obligatory, obligatory.
Oh, I think, yeah, this, this maybe a simple way to say it is required.
Right.
Required. That's probably a simple way to say it. Yes, sis, thanks for the question. I think that, you know, Revelation chapter fourteen verses eight through ten. So that describes the fall of Babylon, right? Or it describes the fall of Babylon and it also talks about, uh, receiving, uh, the beast and his image on, uh, one's forehead or on his hand. Um, so that, that, you know, that's perfectly, those verses are perfectly in line with kind of what we discussed earlier about, uh, you know, Revelation thirteen and, and what it represents. Um, the fact that we have seen, again, we talked about how there are key features of Babylon, right? There's the feature of idolatry. There's a feature of self-exaltation. There's also this feature of church-state union. Um, even here in recent history, I think, I, I think sister, sister just left and I think she joined again. So, um, yes, but, but again, Revelation chapter fourteen verses eight through, uh, ten describes, you know, Babylon falling and it describes individuals receiving the, the mark of the beast and his image. Um, we spent a lot of time talking about some of the key features of Babylon, idolatry, self-exaltation. Um, the feature that we spent the most time talking about was this, this sort of merger of, of church and state that, that Satan himself instigates to compel the conscience. So all of those features we see now, um, even the feature of church-state union to compel religious liberty. Um, we, 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 we saw that in the nineteenth century with the Sunday laws that people sought to pass. Um, Elder Noble just talked about how even back in the sixteenth century, uh, individuals were passing, uh, Sunday law legislation, which persecuted, uh, true Sabbath keepers. So, you know, when the Bible says in Revelation chapter fourteen eight that Babylon has fallen, we know that's the case because we see all of these, these features of, of Babylon. We see them prominently be- before us even, e- even now, even now. So, um, there's a prophetic application there that, that is, that is true even now, that according to Revelation chapter fourteen eight, that Babylon has fallen. She's made all the nations drink of the wine of the wrath of her fornication. Uh, one way to interpret that particular portion of the verse is, um, false doctrine. Um, the Catholic Church does represent a, a feature of Babylon. Um, the, or the papacy represents a, a, a feature of Babylon. And the false doctrine that the papacy has produced is false doctrine that even Protestant denominations, um, it's, 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 it's wine that even they have consumed, um, especially in relation to the Sabbath. Um, and then if any man going down to verses nine and ten, if any man worships the beast or his image and receives his mark, he shall himself also drink of the wine of the wrath of God, which is poured out in full strength into the cup of his indignation. So this is sort of another dis- uh, uh, another description of what we see in Revelation chapter thirteen. Uh, it's a description of essentially this church-state union, which compels the conscience through Sunday worship. And if you do not stay loyal to God and if you make the decision to re- receive this mark and to reject the seven day Sabbath, which, which is a Sabbath that, uh, signifies that you are a believer in the Creator God, you will receive that mark according to Revelation chapter thirteen and according to Revelation chapter nine and ten. So I guess what I'm saying in, in, in summary is that Revelation chapter fourteen verses eight through ten, it, um, it, 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 it's, it's similar in substance to what Revelation chapter thirteen, uh, I believe we focus on verses twelve through fifteen states, but it, it just maybe provides a little bit more detail. We see this principle throughout this, throughout the scriptures, especially the prophetic chapters of repeat and enlarge. And so Revelation chapter fourteen sort of adds details to Revelation chapter thirteen. But this, this same portrait is, is created in, in, in Revelation chapter fourteen verses eight through ten. This portrait of, of, of the devil instigating church-state union to compel the conscience, those who submit essentially to, 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 to Satan's dictates will receive this, this mark. They will receive this mark.
All right, um, I sort of shout out, um, Pastor Lo. I know, um, early on, when we were in a silent mood because I know Pastor Lo always gonna generate some kind of conversation. Um, so I, I don't know if Pastor Lo want to jump in here with any commentos.
Just, just greeting the saints. Um, I was working earlier, so I was on the floor. So the background noise would have, um, you know, crossed the mist. I'm now back in bed and I have a seven, um, AM meeting. So I'm just here sucking up the blessings. Yeah, beautiful, beautiful presentation from Elder Oliver, as, as always. Bless, by what I hear.
Beautiful. So, um, Pastor Lo, in, in light of that, could you just close us off in prayer as we end this session this morning?
Amen, amen. Our Father and our God, great is your faithfulness. Lord, we are grateful for the liberty and the freedom, dear God, that we are able to experience even now. But that freedom is for the glory of humanity salvation. Help us to be about our Father's work and to be diligent, dear God, as we traverse the highways and the byways, telling everyone about the love of Jesus. Father, thank you for the blessings, um, huh, the places where people are already being put to death and beheaded and imprisoned and, uh, all sorts of, of terrible things being done to them, dear God, for their religious convictions. Here we are. We are free to believe whatever we want to believe. But Lord, let us not take such liberty in vain. Help us to be about your work, dear God, to spread this gospel message to the world that your return may be soon. Bless Elder Oliver in his labor, dear God, and bless this, uh, continued work of, um, Christ our righteousness, time. Thank you, dear God. This is our prayer. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Lo. And just for a few announcements, um, of course, I probably should wish everybody the best for the rest of the year, the few days we have for, for this year, according to our Rogarian calendar. And hopefully, you know, as we face the new one, we know the music will get louder and we'll be asked to dance to it. May God give us the faith to to follow our Savior's footsteps. That being said, our next session, of course, would be in January, the fourth Sunday of January. Uh, Ella Noble will be our presenter. So Ella Noble will be touching base with Ella Lo to give him the subject matter so that the flyer could be made, um, in, in, in time to put up as a reminder that we are on every month, once a month, at the fourth Sunday of every month. You are free to invite someone so that we try to get the flyer up a little earlier this time so that you can send it out to your friends and loved ones or even the enemies so that they can join us, um, at least they'll have the opportunity to join us on this forum as we continue to study Christ our righteousness. May God bless us until we meet again. Amen.